Kills the screen though, Joe. You hit it so hard he broke it.
Yeah.
Can you hear it?
Oh, yeah.
Wear your striped shirt.
Do that. That's the whistle instead of the gavel.
Your life, the screen just isn't on. Okay, I'll go ahead. I'll call the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Stearns County meeting to order. First item we have on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. So please try to pledge immediately. Before we do the pledge of oath today, I want to take a moment of silence here to honor the county deputies that lost his life and his duties that he was performing out there. And in this, like honoring him for his service, we reflect our thoughts on his friends and family. Those are the family and friends of Joshua. So let's take a moment for that. And then might I also say, we certainly appreciate the service of our deputies across Stearns County and across the country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
We'll call to show that all commissioners are present today. The first item we have is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, just a reminder, but the paint care agreement was removed from the agenda, but your agendas were then updated. So there's one less item from the very original agenda.
Okay, so we have items one through sixteen that are written in the agenda in front of us. Commissioners, anything we need to be pulled over back to report? If not, I'll look for a motion to pass all sixteen of them.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All of them, favor say aye.
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 That was actually the agenda. Now let's go to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, the minutes from April fourth have been corrected too. There was one mistake in there.
I'll move the minutes, Mr. Chairman, with the correction.
Second.
And if you're not to give us a second on the consent agenda, all of them, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. And we have to quickly move on to administration.
Mr. Chair, under administration, we have two reports or presentations this morning. The first one is from the Great River Regional Library. The second is from Excel Energy. So we do have the director, Karen, here. She can introduce herself and whoever she has with her. Thank you, Karen. You can sit or stand either way. You can sit.
You come to the sitting.
I'll stand.
Oh, okay.
If that's all right. I do have copies of our annual report along too, so I'll pass those over to Mike here.
So good morning. I am Karen Punsek, Executive Director for Great River Regional Library.
I'm Katari Gruber, I'm the Library Services Coordinator of the Belgrade and Painsville branches.
So Katari was with me last year talking about library services. We're back. We do come to our counties twice a year, first at the beginning of the year to talk about the annual activities and then later at budget time to talk about the budget. So the first slide gives you an overview of Great River Regional Library. I would go over this more in detail with new commissioners like Commissioner Bertram. However, Commissioner Bertram served on our library board for quite a long time, so I think he's more than familiar with how we're set up. We are a six-county system with thirty-three locations, thirty-two libraries, and then the GRRL-to-go locker system in Sartell. We passed our strategic plan a couple of years ago, and one of the new pieces to that strategic plan is our theory of change. Great River exists so that people in our communities can find and use trusted information they need to thrive. And we operate under that philosophy and continue to offer services in many different ways. If you go to the next slide, you can see an overview of some of those major activities. And do I slide? Okay. I wasn't really sure how you're set up. No. So these are some of the high points from our annual report. You can see we have ten libraries in the Stearns County area. Most of them are out in western Stearns County, which is kind of interesting, but the largest location is in St. Cloud, which is our headquarters. It's also one of the largest public libraries in the state. So we're very fortunate to have some really great facilities across the region, including all the way out to Belgrade and Painsville, which Katari will tell you a little more about in a short time here. But some of the stats that stood out for us last year is our digital services continued to increase. We had an eleven percent increase in digital circulation last year. That's over two years of exponential growth. We continue to see that growth. And so we're wrestling always with resources. How do we best invest in electronic services, which are really a subscription model versus print, which is, you know, something that people still want? We still circulated two and a half million items across the region last year, which is a pretty good number considering that, you know, we have thirty-two locations. So you divide that out, there's a lot of books on the shelf all over the place. If you go to the next slide, two of the major initiatives last year were game changers for Great River. And one is fines-free. So if you flip to the next slide, you can see that explore, learn, connect without fines. This was a years-long effort. It started out with Read Down Your Fines about ten years ago. When Commissioner Bertram was on the board, we had gone to fines-free in July, June of twenty nineteen, on kids' materials, and we saw some success. We saw the growth in our juvenile collection checking out more, knowing that that was true. And then after COVID kind of hit that revenue line in a really interesting way, we were asking people to keep their stuff home and we really didn't want it back for quite a long time. We learned that that was not as much of a stable part of the budget as we thought it was. It had been a six-figure number in many, many years ago. And we thought we could never really live without fines. But what we found through COVID was that revenue line was declining and less stable. So the board took a gamble last year with Commissioner Lenzmeyer on the board, and we decided to eliminate fines permanently from the Great River budget. We reduced that budget line from about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to about forty thousand dollars. And what we learned was we actually collected a lot more than that, because it wasn't just fines going into that revenue line. It was copy revenue, it was lost materials, and that amount actually constituted a substantial part of that budget line. So we actually didn't take the hit in the budget the way we thought it would. We've seen some growth in the circulation and continue to see that growth. And then the other side of the coin was we received a lot of efficiencies that came from it. So we were able to remove all of our credit card payment terminals, because we no longer had to collect over across the desk in the way we had in the past, which was a substantial savings. And we're also improving interactions across the desk. We don't have to worry about, you know, little Johnny who hasn't been back to the library since last summer and has a dollar on his account, and that's his first experience coming in in the summer. So it's really improved services across the entire region in many predictable and unpredictable ways. It was a good move. And then the other big... Sure, yeah.
But then the loss of materials did have an effect on lost materials.
No, no effect at all. Actually, we continue to report those things that don't come back through our collection agency processes. And if they don't come back at all, then we also go to Minnesota Department of Revenue through revenue recapture with larger balances. We have seen some declines in the number of accounts going, but not as much as you might think. People still tend not to bring things back. I'm not really sure why. So we do pursue all avenues, and we will continue to do that as long as it's cost-effective. The other initiative is something that we had just kind of talked about in concept pre-COVID was Wi-Fi-to-go. That was something that started out as a pilot project with donations and peers. And through the pandemic and changes in state funding, we have been able to expand that project to over three hundred hotspots across the region. They're offered at all locations now, and some are available as a lucky day model, which means if it's there, you can pick it up. And if it's not, you have to come back the next day, or you can place a hold and have it reserved for you. And so there's two different lending models, and that is one of our most popular services now. The other stat I wanted to highlight on that slide before I turn the mic over to Katari is our summer reading program also in twenty twenty-two saw a record number of registrations. We had over twelve thousand kids register for the program across the whole region. We hope to continue to see that growth, because we know that the summer slide has now turned into the pandemic slide, and kids are just not reading at grade level the way they used to. So Katari will tell you about how some of these awesome projects looked at the local level.
Hello, and I brought some show and tell, so we'll get to see some stuff that's happening. So this year, Belgrade turned ninety-five. So that was our big birthday this year. It was first opened in nineteen twenty-seven as the Belgrade Readers Club. So that was an exciting... We had some cookies and punch going on through the day. Had a historical display of our founders and like their first reading, their first record of their first meetings and the books they had checked out and stuff. So it's kind of fun to see during our annual city celebration. People could come in and check out how long and what we've been doing. We also had, I think last year I actually talked about our locally grown fundraiser. And originally, for both libraries, our goal was like two hundred and fifty dollars. And if you're not familiar with locally grown, it's our March fundraiser that all of the dollars that are donated stays right in our local libraries, and we can use it for something special. So both our goals were like two hundred and fifty dollars, and we nailed, like hit it out of the park and raised like a thousand dollars in Belgrade and like seven hundred and fifty in Painsville. And we used it to purchase two sort of fun new collections that kind of are filling a need. Belgrade, we have these wonder books, which have an audio component for kids. So you just turn it on and press play, and it reads the book aloud to you. And then it also has a headphone component. Hey, the You Will Come Parents, that kids can read to themselves as well. So they just came out in March. And it sort of fills the need between, A, not having access to our apps, because a lot of times the kids don't, or people don't have Wi-Fi access, or we've discovered that not a lot of people have CD players anymore. So our book's on CDs. Sometimes they don't have access to that either. So this kind of fills a gap, and there's a bunch of libraries that now have those. So eventually they'll be requestable as well for other items. And then Painsville, we did a similar idea. They're called Playaways. They don't have the book with them, but it's just a little device. Again, power on, press play. You can hook it into your car or headset and listen to the book. So kind of also fills the same need. So that was exciting. And this year, we actually raised money in Belgrade to get snowshoes, which we hit our goal. So that was exciting. Sibley State Park is like fifteen minutes from our library, so people can check them out during the winter and go snowshoeing. One of our big things for Painsville, actually, is we started a play-to-learn collection. And this was an initiative by our local Painsville Lions group. And they actually came to the library, and I think it was at the end of twenty nineteen that they had approached the head, the then-service coordinator, Gretchen Vork, about this. And then with Gretchen's passing and then pandemic hitting, it sort of got tabled until twenty twenty-one, actually. So they came and asked, could we provide money for you guys to do a toy collection that you can check out? And I was like, interesting idea. How can we spend this a little more to be a little more like educational? So I worked with our children's librarian, Connie and Chris, and we were talking at the time for about the reimagining school readiness skills of like talk and play, science and math, body and brain, those kinds of skills, and how we could kind of fit this in. And we spoke to our Jamie, our collection development head, to see if this would also work. And so it took a year, but eventually we did come up with a collection of nineteen toys. So we have two age groups kind of that we're working on, like one and up. And then we've got three and up, and then we have a couple focused on the five-year-olds, little two. But what's cool about these is that they include with them, and this took a little work, but it was very intentional, a little activity sheet. And so like you can provide toys, but sometimes it's what do you do with those toys? What skills are you actually learning? And so that's one thing we provided here with notes to the caregivers of like this, when you're using license fruit, your child will learn about shapes, using your finger muscles and boosting hand-eye coordination. And then it gives options like for parents and caregivers to talk about these items, like what do you do with the little worm? Where can we go next? Can we do this together? Where would we find a real worm? Talking about real-life solutions. And then incorporating the reimagining school readiness, like when your child learns colors, they're actually learning math. Try sorting things by color, and then count and compare how many are in each group. Those kinds of examples for caregivers. So we're offering these as a one-week checkout for caregivers, and they can check out two at a time. And these have been super popular. So that one's actually a GeoBoard, so you can create designs with rubber bands, and you can put cards and try to match them. So that one's been a super popular one as well. So yeah, that's sort of our fun things we've been doing this year in Painsville and Belgrade. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious, do you encourage the activities to be done with parents? And, you know, not just obviously alone, but with a family unit, the reading and everything, obviously, which really deepens the parental relationship with the child. Is that something you encourage, or?
Well, yes, I can actually like, these books that we actually collected, they actually have a learning mode. And it's actually sort of like a book discussion, so they will ask questions, and you can actually like talk about it with kids as well, what they learned or what they comprehended about the book. I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, there's a lot of like, you want the family involvement. It's a family, it's a connection thing. It helps the kids learn. They have learning from the parents, I guess. But there's also the individual aspect, that you want the kids to be also confident to start learning on their own and reading on their own. So I mean, it's sort of a both, yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, Wright County is, I've heard that Wright County may be exceeding us in population and that distribution of the budget is going to be occurring?
Yeah, we were just at Wright County last week, so a good question. So for those who aren't familiar, we have a six-county funding formula. It's got three components: population, borrower numbers, net tax, capacity. Wright County's growing in all three. And for the first time next year, Wright County's contribution will be about ten thousand dollars more than Stearns County. In the Joint Powers Agreement, it says our board composition is based on budget share. So at that point, Wright County would be entitled to five members of the board, and Stearns four, which is reversed from where we're at right now. They have expressed interest in going that direction. We do have currently five members of the board, so there's Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Zuriya Anjam, George Fiedler, Al Omdal. I'm gonna forget the fifth one now. I didn't do them in order. So of the two... Lynn Gruing, yes, she's the newest one. That's why I forget her. And so I think Zuriya and Alice' terms are both up this year, so there's probably an opportunity with terms expiring to make that shift. What we don't know is how much that's going to bounce around from one budget year to the next. So it may be a situation where in twenty twenty-five, we're flipping again. But it's never happened before, because once upon a time, Great River had a twenty-five-member board, and Stearns County was a signatory with six votes. So this is a huge shift in how Great River operates with the headquarters not generating enough of the activity and tax capacity and all of that to make Stearns County the lead county in the budget now. It's kind of interesting.
Yeah, actually, we've talked about this a little bit before. Would like to encourage you to consider adding the fifth one, but not subtracting one here because of it kind of going back and forth. And one could argue it probably should have already happened that way. The populations are close enough, et cetera. So something for your board to consider. But I was wondering, because your searches are fabulous, how does one search for those books for young children? Because it's not truly an audio, and it's not solely a book, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I can address the first piece. Just for reference, the Joint Powers Agreement, in order to change the composition of the board, would have to be amended and signed by all six counties. So we're set to review that next year.
And we're used to doing that.
Okay.
We only have like over four hundred Joint Powers Agreements. Our county attorney's office loves them.
For these ones, it's actually a good question, because I haven't actually searched these in the catalog before. So with the introduction of the, this is like the first time we've hosted these, and there's like, I think, five libraries maybe who got collections this year. And so what we're doing actually is, the first six months that they're out, we wanted them to be available for just our patrons in the library, sort of like that Lucky Day thing. So it's basically they come in and then can check them out. They're not reservable yet. But after that six months, then they'll become reservable, and we can pull from the other libraries. But I think it's like you can still look just by the name. It'll just say the format when you actually click into the title.
The reason why, Matt, we have a four-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter who loves the library, and she has a Yoto now.
Yeah.
So for those of you who don't know, it's basically doing some of it, although that's the next step that's better, because you're also getting to follow the book along.
Yeah, following along.
And thinking about, I know sometimes before we go with her, and she's always getting new books from there, because, oh, this, A to Twist Scientist, or Snow Dancer. Highly recommend Snow Dancer, even when you don't want snow to come, like this last weekend. It was a great book. But a lot of times I'll go before and try to do some kind of searching about what might be there. So I'm not reserving them. But I think sometimes people, when you know that you might have, you know, those busy little ones. And so I want to thank you. You don't have to actually answer that one right now, but I've been curious about that. But also want to thank you for the help with seniors. We got both the littles, who take lots of time and assistance. And then I've heard from several constituents recently about just really appreciating the help with trying to figure out parts of the technology. So want to, that lifelong learning on both ends. And then I'm curious, this is a St. Cloud one. Is the money still being raised for the STEM station and bringing in the Raptors? And if it is, how does one make a contribution?
Well, the locally grown campaign closed out at the end of March, and I know they were within less than a hundred dollars of reaching the goal. So while we didn't hit exactly a thousand dollars, I'm confident that those ideas will move forward. And we're always accepting donations. You can either donate to Great River or to a specific library, whichever your preference is. And if you go to the website, griver.org, and click on Support Us, you're able to make an online contribution there, or you can just mail in a check or give it to someone at the desk.
Always good to be asking that, Mr. Chair.
One last question, Mr. Chairman, is we've all been made aware of, and you're aware of, the book. It's perfectly normal. You just want to say something publicly about it that everyone knows that it's been addressed?
It's being addressed. I believe we've received summary consideration forms. A couple of individuals have appealed, and it's in the appeal process right now. What's interesting to me is in another state, there was a federal case recently that demanded that that book and a number of others be put on the back on the library shelf due to First Amendment issues. And so we're watching that case very closely as we pursue resolving the issues here at Great River.
I've got just a couple of questions, just with the avalanche technology we have. And I tend to be behind the avalanche instead of in front of it. So just going from hard copy and into more technical things, how are we doing with checkouts on hard copy that people are actually taking the physical piece?
That has stabilized. So pre-COVID, in twenty nineteen, I think total circulation was three million, and then, of course, things dropped. We're back up to about two and a half. So what we're seeing in our small communities is that growth really took off already with fines-free. In the larger communities, it hasn't yet. And so I think once it does in the larger communities, we may be over that three-million mark again. It's hard to say. There has been a huge shift to digital, though. And it's one of those services, it would take as much money as we would give it. And so the real balance is how many resources from the library go into that collection to meet the demand, because we will never actually meet the demand. And that's a challenge. Physical, though, I would say what some of the things, major shifts that have happened since COVID is streaming's a totally different animal. We can't always purchase or subscribe to content that people want any longer if it's in a film format. So that's a challenge. It used to be the largest circulating collection was our DVD collection. That's true in the smaller communities, not in the larger ones. So there's shifts in the types of things people are checking out. Juvenile materials continue to grow everywhere. And so, you know, just knowing that there's a lot of different reasons people are borrowing materials, we balance the limited resources we have with the demands and do the best we can.
We're making an effort to, you know, expand broadband and our Wi-Fi into our rural areas, especially into western Stearns County. What will benefit, I mean, those folks may not have access to, well, they're not accessing our local library. They're accessing the system, but they're also accessing the availability to get some things nationally and worldwide, too. Is that not correct?
Yes, and, you know, the services we have for broadband have greatly expanded. Like when I started twenty-four years ago, I think we didn't even have internet stations yet. So it's really been interesting throughout my career to see how much that's changed. We are now at the point where we are actually reducing the number of internet stations, because most people are coming in with their own device. So we have the Wi-Fi hotspots that people can check out. We have in-library Wi-Fi. We continue to have internet stations in all locations, but they're just not used as much as they were. We're now offering print-to-go services, and that's part of the reason internet station use has declined, is people actually come in with their own device and are able to print wirelessly, so they don't need to log onto a computer to do it. And then the other project that's just about completed came through our ARPA funds. We are adding Wi-Fi access extensions in parking lots into a dozen libraries in those communities where the city owns the parking lot, that the library actually is part of, and the city wants it there. So it's a dozen places, and the equipment was on backorder, but I believe it's arrived and it's being installed as we speak, so.
And that was going to be my final question, Karen. How much are you seeing where we have, especially in the rural areas, people coming actually to the library or to a local entity just to pick up Wi-Fi, because they have no rural access?
I think you can speak to this better than me. Having worked in Belgrade, I'm pretty sure that's why the Belgrade Library exists for a lot of people.
Yeah, we have like some consistent even computer use, but our Wi-Fi hotspots are constantly checked out. And then people are usually using our Lucky Day ones, which are weak. They're using it as stopgap while they're waiting for their three-week hotspots to come in. So it's just a constant rotation to do that, yeah.
And as far as showing up just in the parking lot to get a signal, are they doing that?
I know, I've heard reports, because our mayor actually has the shop right next to us. And so she, like, our Wi-Fi does reach out to our sidewalk, and she's like, oh, yeah, I've seen people parked there using their laptops. And I know in Painsville, I've seen it. They come in the summer, and sometimes we'll sit out on the bench outside while I'm working inside and we're closed to do that, yeah. So we've seen it.
Well, and you have the, there's also an ARPA project that went to all the libraries that have study rooms. We have Wi-Fi or laptops for in-library use, so people who need help zooming or doing a telehealth visit are able to do that in the library. And we wanted to make sure it was in locations where you could have some privacy. So we limited it to those facilities that actually had study rooms.
I will say, because this has been a fun project for me for Painsville, we've been revamping our space, because since libraries have become so much of like more of a community space, and I don't know, the community living room, people call it. And right when we started, like Painsville just had, they had one table, and that was about it. And so we've been revamping the space, and we've created like a secondary table seating in the stacks, and we moved a section by the teen area, so now there's a table over there, and we have the window seating. So we're creating more spaces for people to come in and actually use their devices, own devices in the laptop, like their laptops in the library, so they can use our Wi-Fi and such. So that's been exciting to see people come and do that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing that I want you to be aware of is sometimes it's not all in the numbers. You had a discussion here of the waiver of fines and the financial difference of that waiver. But it doesn't all show up in the numbers. For example, back when we had the fine system in place, we had to tie up staff to monitor that stuff. And when they were monitoring that, they weren't doing other things that were beneficial to the big picture. So there are things that are benefits that are pretty hard to measure. And that's just one example. And then finally, and we have folks in the room like me that remember back in the day when the Great River Regional Library Annual Report to the Board was a much more animated experience. when the Great River Regional Library Annual Report to the Board was a much more animated experience than it is now. Boy, that's as polite as I can say it. But, uh, nevertheless, uh, we've got 32 branches. And the way people use the resources is slightly different wherever they are located. Uh, using the benefits of that. Uh, but I'm encouraged listening to you folks. Of your awareness of what Great River Regional Library does. And, uh, I think it's only, well, thank hell, it's only going to get better. And, uh, and there's a lot more possibilities we can explore. And, uh, as, uh, in my opinion, I think in terms of the big picture, we will see more and more home use. Via, uh, the internet and folks using library resources. No, that's a wonderful way to, uh, I guess multiply the benefits. Besides, uh, folks coming into the, any one of the 32 facilities. I never thought I'd ever say, um, being on the library board could actually be fun, but we're there. Even though, uh, uh, we have, uh, more timely issues that, uh, take up our concerns than in the past.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, his definition of fun has changed dramatically in the 32 years he's been here. I can tell you that.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to admit that. Yeah.
I would think so, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Okay. Thank you much for your presentation. Uh, I'd say I've been, unfortunately, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I don't know if they heard you out in cyberspace because we're having some technical difficulties in the backroom.
Mr. Chair, I think it's only your mic.
It's only me.
If we take a quick break, we're going to replace your microphone.
Doesn't surprise me. We'll take a five minute break and this will be the break that we're taking, uh, on the agenda. So we'll take five minutes now.
That won't.
Test, test, test. Quiet. Test.
I just got an email.
I think we can hear you again, Joe.
Okay.
Oh, shucks.
Okay, I liked it better before.
It'll be you next time.
We're going to reconvene our, uh, board meeting. Uh, the next presentation we have actually is from, uh, XL Energy. Mark Ossendorf from XL, you're going to be presenting for us. So Mark, I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. Again, my name is Mark Ossendorf. I'm a Community Relations Manager with XL Energy here in St. Cloud. Uh, I have two of my colleagues with me today, Matt Langen and Randy Fordice. Uh, they are deeply engaged in these transmission projects, which is what we're presenting to you today. I'd like to preface that by saying these transmission projects are a direct result of a plan that was approved by the Minnesota Public Utility Commission last year called our Integrated Resource Plan. Uh, that took nearly three years, uh, to get through the public utilities, uh, review and approval process. Anything that we file with the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission is called a docket. And anyone and everyone can comment on our dockets. It's a very open and public process. Many times if we get five, 10, 50, even a hundred comments in a docket, that's a lot. The Integrated Resource Plan had a, had over eight hundred. This was a enormously debated and reviewed plan, but we are executing that plan as we transition away from coal to more renewable energy to decarbonize our fleet. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Matt and Randy and they're actually going to walk through the presentation and be happy to answer your questions. So thank you for having us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners for, uh, inviting us today. Uh, one quick correction on something Mark said, the second project, the Minnesota Energy Connection was a result of the Integrated Resource Plan. There is, uh, an initial project that we'll talk about adding a second circuit to the existing CapEx 2020 lines. That is a newly proposed project, um, that still will, uh, need to go through. Both projects will need to go through some sort of, uh, commission, Public Utilities Commission review. But, um, we did want to quickly address the Alexandria to Big Oaks Transmission Line Project, fairly newly proposed. It was studied at the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, uh, over the last number of years. And then they gave the approval for utilities, including XL Energy and others to move forward with several transmission line projects, including this one that will effectively add just an additional line to the, uh, transmission infrastructure where you see an open line along I-94. Uh, this will be between the Alexandria substation outside of Alexandria and the Big Oak Substation, which will be built on the Sherco property, uh, outside of Becker. So we're just in the initial stages of, uh, getting together some regulatory filings, including a certificate of need docket, a route permit, both of which we have to file with the Public Utilities Commission and expect to do later this summer. We held some public meetings and our public open houses in Alexandria and Becker last week and a virtual open house to ask for comment. And I think I would agree that we, you know, heard a lot of support for it. People weren't surprised. We told them about 10 or 15 years ago that this was the likely plan. And now the system's just at the point where we need to add that second transmission line on the existing infrastructure. We do still have to go through the overall regulatory processes for that. So you'll see some more notices and things like that coming forward in the, uh, coming months as we get to the point of filing. But the general benefits of that, uh, project are reduce congestion on the existing transmission, particularly in Western Minnesota, Central Minnesota and the Dakotas, increase access to renewable energy. And then as we noted, add that second circuit onto the existing CapEx 2020 lines.
I got a question for you then. But you're going to be eliminating the coal plant down there. By eliminating the coal plant down there, why would you have a greater need now to have the, the second line?
Sure. Um, kind of twofold question. You know, we are retiring coal throughout the region. That was part of the Integrated Resource Plan that Matt, or excuse me, that Mark discussed. And it's really part of an overall plan to reduce carbon emissions, uh, by 85% by 2030 in pursuit of XL Energy's vision to be 100% carbon free by 2050. Uh, this will increase access to renewable energy in the region. And as the electric system has just grown, we need to have more transmission to be able to ease that congestion, improving reliability for customers throughout Minnesota and the surrounding region where we also serve customers as well as, um, respond to, have a more resilient transmission system where we can move power from where it's generated to where it's used.
And Mr. Chairman, on that point, the transmission is pretty much anything you're doing is, it's going from, it's going to the cities. It's for more metropolitan customers, correct?
I wouldn't say that it's just the cities. You know, we serve 1.3 million customers throughout Minnesota. And then because of the, it, the integrated network of the transmission system that we have, other utilities throughout the state depend on this as well. Particularly if you think about the way the transmission system is built, kind of around central Minnesota, where we've got such strong connections at Sherco, at Monticello, et cetera. And then of course the lines that go up to connection, connecting into Alexandria, Fargo and other areas as well.
And is it coming, Mr. Chairman, is it coming from the north going to the south or is it coming from the south going to the north?
It's really going from where it's generated to where it's used. The bulk of electricity would be where the bulk of the population that, in the region is, that is the Twin Cities. But that's not to say that customers in St. Cloud, Stearns County, uh, wouldn't benefit from it. Particularly in winter months where we see more electric heat use and things like that. And we see a lot of winter peaking on the system in the region.
Isn't that why you kind of have the substation like Freeport has one in Alec? Because that is a ramp off too for local.
Yes, Commissioner, 100% correct.
I don't want to get too far ahead of the presentation, which looks like we are. But then does this also relate to the large solar field that's going to be put in, uh, in Sherburne County?
Uh, the adjacent to the Sherco Power Plant? Uh, yes, that'd be part of it. And if we can get into that project, then we can kind of talk about that too. Right? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, Minnesota Energy Connect, the Alexandria to Big Oaks, fairly straightforward project. You know, we're adding a second circuit on to existing infrastructure. The Minnesota Energy Connection Project is quite a bit different. It's a proposal that will help us continue clean, uh, Minnesota's clean energy transition. Replace our retiring, uh, coal-fired power plants with renewable energy, particularly the most productive in the region, which is located in southern and southwest Minnesota. And of particular importance is being able to reuse the existing grid connection at the Sherco Plant. Federal regulations require that as, uh, traditional plants retire, the utility reuse that connection or lose the rights to connect to customers at that point. That's why we need to build a new power line to connect renewable energy into the existing connection. And to your question earlier, Mr. Chair, why we're also building additional solar on, uh, land near the Sherco Power Plant to also connect into that as each of the units retire in the coming years. Mark had mentioned, uh, that this is part of the, this came out of the Integrated Resource Plan. We discussed this, uh, transmission line proposal as part of, uh, that about a year ago, about 14 months ago, when it was officially approved in February 2022. The Commission generally liked the idea of a power, of a new transmission line to meet this connection. But they wanted to see the details. So they asked us to file a certificate of need and eventual route permit for the process. So they could really dive into the details and we'll get into a little bit more about, uh, the regulatory process and what's covered in the certificate of need and route permitted in a moment. And as we also noted, you know, this is, uh, going to help us reduce our carbon emissions. We were the first utility, the major utility in the country to propose, uh, a 100% carbon free system by 2050. And as you're likely aware, Minnesota recently passed the 100 by 2040 law. This will get us a good chunk of the way to, uh, meeting that regulation. Um, the project itself is a double circuit 345 KB transmission line. Uh, this is a kind of picture of what, uh, you would see, single pole towers, three arms on either side and essentially two independent circuits on either side of the transmission line. Depending on the final route, the line would be about 160 to 180 miles long, connecting in Southern Lyon County to, uh, propose wind development in the area to the retiring Sherco plant near Becker. The general, uh, area that we started with, and this is where I know the kind of difference between just simply adding a structure or adding in lines to existing infrastructure like the Alexandria to Big Oaks project. With this one, we really didn't know where we were going to go. We knew that we had to get from point A to point B. But, uh, and Matt will go into a little more detail on the process of this, but we wanted to start with a very open area and say, if we need to go from southern, southwest Minnesota to Becker, let's not pigeonhole ourselves into additional, into initial routes or too narrow of corridors. Let's take a very, you know, broad look at this, identify some likely corridors, whether that's following existing transmission lines, following existing roadways. If you can't find those necessarily, look at field lines, section lines, property lines, somewhere where there's already some sort of existing barrier or so to speak, uh, within the prop, within the land that you can follow. And then let's go out to landowners and ask for their feedback on that. So we, uh, conducted an open house, a virtual open house in November to introduce the project. And then held in-person open houses in February and March too, with these corridors identified and some initial alignments that we call them within those corridors, asking for feedback, saying, you know, this is what we've been able to identify due to some, using publicly available data. Give us your feedback and tell us what could work, what may not work and the land use impacts that, uh, may have. And then of course, brief, briefing, uh, state and local government, uh, agencies, DNR, et cetera, and boards like yourselves. The two permits that are required before anything like this can be built are the certificate of need, as I mentioned. That will cover essentially the size, type and timing. What is the size of infrastructure you want to build? What is the type? Is it a power plant, transmission line, et cetera? And when will it be needed? Describes the need that the problem, or the problem that, uh, the infrastructure will solve. And, um, a lot of cost data, engineering data, energy forecast, things like that, that are reviewed by the state, particularly Department of Commerce, which represents customers. And there are numerous opportunities for public involvement. Mark mentioned a very public process. Anyone can comment either by, uh, um, writing and, or emailing the Public Utilities Commission. And then once it gets into their hearing process, hearings are generally held, uh, where anyone can come in and comment on the need for the process. The route permit, and Matt will get into more detail on this, uh, is another opportunity for public comment when that is filed. We are required to propose at least two route options for the state to consider in that process. And the Commission may select one or more of those options. We expect to file that route permit in September this year after another round of open houses later this summer. And with that, Matt, do you want to, want to talk about where you're going or where you've been and where you're going with route development?
Sure, Randy. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, thanks for, uh, giving us the time to present, uh, this morning. I think what I'd like to do is maybe talk about timeframes a little bit and ways that, um, uh, government units and, uh, your constituents can participate in the process. And then, and then we'll get into the, how we develop these routes. But in terms of route development, uh, these are things that are not done behind closed doors. Rather, this is a very public and open process, uh, that XL Energy takes in gathering feedback. Rather, this is a very public and open process that XL Energy takes in gathering feedback. So while we had a round of open houses to look at a whole host of route segment options in February and March, we're still taking comments to date. I think a few just popped into the inbox this morning on, on these route options, asking for communities and individual landowners to provide feedback on the route options and information for us to consider as we're winnowing these routes down to the two options that will eventually propose to the Commission. Based on that set of feedback, we are going to have, as Randy mentioned, another round of public open houses in June. Folks will receive notice of those. They'll receive maps showing where those route options, whether they've been tweaked or eliminated, or some areas added since the February and March open house. And then we're going to solicit feedback on those options this summer. This is all pre-application work before we ever submit, file an application to the Public Utilities Commission. And so not only will there be these public feedback opportunities prior to us submitting that application, but then, once we file that application in the fall of this year, there will be an approximately 15 to 18-month public review that's overseen by the Public Utilities Commission with public feedback opportunities along the way. The goal at the end of that is to have one approved route going between the project endpoints, between Becker and southern Lyon County. And then, once that route is approved, XL Energy would go about acquiring land easements for the transmission line, would conduct final engineering, and then construction of the project would occur between 2026 and the end of 2028. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of sort of the overall timeframe and the ways that your community and your constituents can participate in the process. So as, as we have on the slide here, certainly, we want landowner and local government feedback. Our state and federal agencies participate along the way, both in the pre-application activities and certainly during the formal proceeding. We are looking to, as we're identifying these corridors, we're looking for those existing linear features on the land. We're looking to minimize crossings of existing transmission lines along the way. We are designing these routes so that no homes are within the 150-foot right-of-way. So where you see jogs in some of our proposed alignments, that's to avoid some, whether it be a home or what we refer to on this slide as high-risk permitting areas. To give an example of what those areas might be, we are not proposing a transmission route within a state park. We are not proposing a transmission route, again, over a neighborhood. We are not proposing a transmission structure be placed in a surface water. So we have to avoid public lands, we have to avoid lakes, we have to avoid neighborhoods, cul-de-sacs, right? And so where you see some of our routing choices, these are some of the major important features on the landscape that we're trying to avoid with our transmission line routes.
Before you move forward, you say minimize crossing existing transmission lines. Is that a hazard or is that for efficiency?
Thank you. Good question, Mr. Chair. When we cross a transmission line, there's, there can be safety issues around construction. So what we want to do is probably take an outage on that transmission line at the time that we would construct it. And then, for ongoing operations and maintenance, any time that we would need to make repairs or any, do any work at those crossings, we may need to take outages there again for the safety of operations and maintenance. So we look to minimize those crossings to the extent we can.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Randy. And so we have a map here on the screen showing the many route options that are currently under consideration within Stearns County. These are the route options that we shared at our public open houses in that first round. And they are the route options that we are taking feedback on. Certainly, we've received a lot of feedback on these already, and I think we'll continue to receive feedback. When, as we take that data and that, those public comments, we can winnow or tweak these routes and then bring those back out for that second round of public open houses again in June. One thing I'll note about this, and as we're all, you know, there's a particular scale of this map that may or may not be easy to read on the screen right now. We do have a project website where, and it's M N Energy Connection dot com. And we have an interactive map on that website that is, I think, very user-friendly. Zoom in and out to particular areas of interest, and you can see, you know, in, on this map, which, which road they might follow, what property lines they might follow. And I think that is where we have directed a lot of folks to, to really analyze their particular area of interest. And then, on that same website, there's a community engagement page where folks can type in any comments that they have, and those come directly to the project team, to Randy and I. We review every comment that comes in and take it under consideration as we develop these routes.
And those comments can be submitted by email as well, both goes straight to Matt and Mike's email inboxes. And here's that.
And just in time, there's the project-specific email address. There is a project-specific toll-free phone number that folks can call and ask questions, get information. We'll encourage people to leave a voicemail if somebody doesn't pick up at that, at that number, and Randy or I will get back to that person. If they leave a good time to contact them, that'd be great. But toll-free, project-specific phone number, the website address is available on this slide, and then, again, that project-specific email for comments or questions.
This line that you're showing travels in directions to the southwest. It goes to the southwest corner. Does that have anything to do with the community of Sioux Falls? Are we looking at taking power down, down to the Sioux Falls areas? I mean, there's, I'm just wondering why it's heading that direction.
Sure. The reason that the endpoint on the southwest side is located in southwest Minnesota, Mr. Chair, is that that's where the most productive wind resources in the region are, is essentially Lyon County. Last summer, I believe, we put out a request for information to wind developers to ensure that there would be enough projects available that it would make sense to connect, to build this line to that location. We did get enough responses from that to demonstrate that we could connect at least 2,000 megawatts of new wind energy, wind and solar to this line, therefore, which is what we need to, which is the amount of energy that we need to connect into the, the grid connection at Sherco to meet those federal regulations that I mentioned.
Okay. So, so the power we're looking at is probably going to be staying in Minnesota or?
Generally, yeah. We would expect it to, you know, flow from the southern endpoint up to the Sherco grid connection and then out into the regional grid serving Minnesota.
And just then, will this also be going down to the metro area, but would it be going to Sherco first and then down to the metro area?
Sherco first and into the regional grid, which would include St. Cloud. I mean, St. Cloud and Stearns County is generally powered from that, those connect, I wouldn't say just the Sherco connection, Sherco, Monticello, essentially the regional grid that connects into the, the grid that's been built around central Minnesota over the last, you know, 50, 70 years.
Okay. And with this, are you looking for a, a large enhancement of wind power?
Significant, yes. The line is designed to connect at least 2,000 megawatts of new renewables that will connect at that endpoint or to this line, I should say. And then, as you had mentioned, I believe, 400-megawatt solar project that is being built around the Sherco plant right now.
Okay.
If I could note one last thing, you know, there's been, there's a lot of concern about, you know, the facilities at Sherco going away. As part of this project, we'll also build what's called synchronous condensers. That's a voltage stabilizer to make sure that as we manage the variable nature of renewable energy, which isn't just the steady state, you know, flow of power that traditional plants have offered, the existing Sherco site will continue to be really important for XL Energy in the state of Minnesota as we, you know, build the infrastructure that continues to serve customers, including those synchronous condensers, which will help deliver reliability.
Okay. Mark has heard me vent this concern a couple of times, and that is, I was thinking that the proposal to churn the Sherco plant to natural gas would have given us that option. And I know that was explored because then we would have the ability, you know, to have some form of backup and that we would have that. Secondly, it would also be a more environmentally favorable way because we would be allowed maybe to take some of the coal burning plants offline, which going to natural gas would be a bit cleaner, but that was not XL's decision. And of course, we've got some politics coming involved with the 2040 plan, which also may affect that. So I don't know if you want to respond to taking that offline?
Yep.
And it also is, is an issue for workers in, in the area.
Right. So there is a just transition effort, a very extensive effort to help the employees that are at Sherco transition to new positions. The company is committed to no layoffs. There is a very extensive project effort, working to retrain, retool them. They will have the opportunity to apply for other jobs in the company. No one will be laid off. Again, that may require relocation, but I want to preface that there is a highly extensive just transition process being evaluated for those employees, impacted employees. So going back to the Integrated Resource Plan, yes, you are exactly right. Their, part of that plan was to build a natural gas combined cycle facility at Sherco. Through the 800 comments that I said, the environmental groups were very strongly opposed to that. They provided evidence to the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. They did their own modeling and said they don't need this natural gas plant, this fossil fuel plant. Here's the evidence to support that. The Public Utilities Commission came back to us and said, we never asked you, is there an alternative option without the gas plant there? Go back and study it. We were required to do that. We did. Ultimately, that's what got approved, which was no gas plant at Becker, the build this Minnesota Energy Connection transmission line, and explore the option of two smaller CT, combustion turbine gas plants, one down in this Lyon County area and another proposed south of Fargo, I believe, are the two rough locations that those would go. Those would be black start capability. What that means is if the entire grid collapsed, power plants need electricity to operate. They need something to get going. These plants would be self-sufficient. They would be able to put some energy on the grid so you could get larger plants back up and running. So that, like these processes, still would have to go through a very extensive public comment and review process with the Public Utilities Commission. But again, those were concepts that were approved out of the Integrated Resource Plan last year.
Okay. Well, thank you, because I'm sure other people had similar question, so.
Well, and I can just say too, sitting on Stearns Electric Co-op Board, when GRE, you know, decided to divest the Coal Creek, you know, they had the same thing with employees, you know, give them the option to, you know, take a different position in the company versus just saying everybody's out of a job. And, you know, going back to when CapEx, you know, 2020 started, you know, obviously it went close past my place, and I was, you know, pretty involved. I, I mean, that took a long time for that whole system to get built out. I think, oh, what year did that start, like 2004?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, the, I think it takes about 10 years from the time you start studying something until a line is energized. So the original CapEx studies were, I believe, 2004, and then the first regulatory filing was 2006, when I happened to start on the CapEx project. And then, the, far ago to St. Cloud to Monticello line, construction started in 2010, about a two-to-three-year construction for the entire length of that.
Yeah, and I must say, I mean, you guys had outreach meetings all the time. I mean, it was, it was pretty intense process. And, you know, everybody gave input. It was, you know, at the end, people still didn't like the final route, but I guess, yeah, pretty much with anything you do nowadays, but.
Yeah, there's nothing.
And we knew, I think, that the second arm of that would, where the line would come on eventually, so.
And in general, when you try to do a project for the common good and long range, you're not going to get 100% support. There's always going to be.
Correct.
Issues that people are concerned about, so. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead and move on. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Mike, we got questions from Mr. Miller, Mr. Dixon, that you passed on to Mark or whomever. Was somebody going to respond to those or?
I don't believe I have them with me.
Those were comments that I received via email from Mike that I forwarded on. These were constituents in the county that wanted a response, so.
Maybe what we can do, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, is have, they're here today, and I thought this was going to be a public hearing at first, and then I understood that it wasn't, so they submitted the questions. But maybe what we can do is get somebody's email. If it's going to be you, Mark, grab the cards, they're in the back, couple, and then there's a host of questions, and I'd appreciate it. This affects the third district, obviously, San Augusta through Kimball.
Correct.
And I've gotten a lot of input on this. And so I've just got a couple of questions, and then maybe what we'll do to, in the, in the sensitivity of time, is reiterate those questions that have been submitted to you, and then you maybe can get the answer.
Right. And the best way, again, is to make, is to give them the contact information, the website, the comments. That is monitored by Randy and Matt and others, and that, that is a formal documentation in the process, so we've received those comments, and they will get a response. But we will make sure that the emails and their questions, we respond to.
And maybe if you have a couple of extra copies of the handout, we can give them that with the contact information. I've been through the PUC process a couple of times, and I never really walked out of those meetings thinking, boy, they heard me, or I, I never, and again, this isn't criticism, this is reality in my world. The PUC, I don't think, ever turned down anything, rate increases or route changes or anything. So, I mean, part of the sensitivity is people feeling, of course, I go back to the powerline days in the 70s when you didn't go through all this. The reason you're going through what you're going through is because of the, they just showed up in farm fields, and one of them's right beside our farm, and they were starting to do surveying, and nobody told anybody anything. So maybe it's overregulation, but it's better than no regulation. So, and part of that sensitivity still hangs on today. The 800 responses that you talked about, how do you, how do you handle those? Do you respond to those? Do you interact with them in any way or?
And those were actually comments that were filed with the Public Utilities Commission. So then, we all subscribe to those dockets, and those comments are forwarded on. We have a regulatory team that is required to monitor those and respond.
What, have you gone to any township meetings, any other board meetings? We ask you to come to ours. I'm, I'm just curious, are you making these kind of presentations, anybody?
We are presenting to Kimball Chamber next week.
Kimball Chamber, Meeker County. We, yeah, we're presenting to, we've reached out to all counties that we, that were in the notice area and said we're available for presentation, just let us know when we can get on calendars.
And nobody's asked for one, Mr. Chairman, except for us at this point?
No, we've been at Renville County, Meeker County, I believe, is next week, and Chippewa County, Lyon County, several in southwest Minnesota as well.
I'm going to try to be at the Kimball meeting. I didn't know you were going to be there, but that might be helpful too, just get a better handle on this. The, the lines, I think you showed, that was one of the big things, 120 feet, some of them are, most of them are 90 feet in height?
Oh, the power line itself?
Correct.
Yeah, 90 to 140 feet, I think, depending on the terrain. If it's a level and straight and flat area, they tend to, they'd be shorter in that sense, Matt?
And then, one of the questions was, Chairman, I asked Jody, and she's not here because she's at a conference, but the right-of-way, how that works in the county right-of-way, you know, the height restrictions. We've got, you know, if a farmer cuts into the road right-of-way five feet, he's getting spanked or she's getting spanked. You, you guys, I, I don't know how that works with, we just kind of let you do it, or, you know, the townships and the county right-of-ways. I'd like to have Jody, Mike, if you can help, just kind of get a handle on that. And then, the energy options you talked about, if something happens, part of what Joe says on the flip side, on the other side of that is, if you put all your inks in one basket, if it's all solar, all wind, something happens, you know, the Texas, you know, situation, I would assume you've got backup plans.
Well, yep. And, and part of that plan was, is we just filed a license extension for our Monticello nuclear generating facility, and that, the license extension that our two nuclear reactors in Prairie Island is being evaluated right now. I would like to think it's going to be quite likely, we're going to ask for 20-year license extensions at those facilities. That, the Monticello extension was something, a concept that was approved as part of the Integrated Resource Plan as well. So, yes, we understand in order to meet these renewable energy objectives, carbon-free objectives, we can't do it without nuclear with today's technology. We absolutely have to have them.
So I'll have, Mr. Chairman, I'll have the individuals contact that site, and then, again, if you've got a couple of extra of these, leave them with somebody, or, you know, I want to keep mine.
Uh, yeah. The company has it electronically, so, we submitted it electronically, Mike, can we be able to share that, or do you want me to send it again?
Yeah, I can share it.
Thank you.
You can share it, and I'll share it via email then, so, thank you for making the presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask if there was a place to post it, or give it on our Facebook page or something, then people can get to it pretty easily if they can't remember it. I've pulled it up, the map, as you said, you can blow it up big, where to engage, it's pretty direct and simple, and I'm saying that because sometimes these are not simple things to do, so, thank you, thank you for doing that, and then, you may have already said it, but can you reiterate roughly timing about those open houses in June with the new final options?
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner, thank you for the question, yes, we're looking at mid-June for a timeframe, week of June 12th, around there, for those open houses, we still have to winnow those routes down to the extent possible, and then we will select the locations for those public open houses based on those updated routes, but it's a mid-June timeframe for us.
Maybe that's something else we could post on our Facebook.
Mr. Chairman, how are you going to advertise those? A postcard again?
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner, yes, we'll send mailings to landowners, probably update our mailing list, because the last time we developed a mailing list was last July or June, I believe it was, and so we'll want to update that and make sure we have current addresses, we use property tax rolls, and then we also advertise in local newspapers, and we'll likely do a social media campaign as well.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I ask that is, a lot of people, of course, people miss it in the mail, or the card I saw, I didn't see anything in the newspapers, like in Kimball or Cold Spring Record, or, and maybe they were there, I even missed it, but certainly that's what I would suggest, is that you do try to get it out in more social media, postcard, newspapers, on our website, Commissioner Clark's got a good idea, put it on there, because there is a lot of interest in this, it's going to happen, I don't think anybody's naive that it's not going to happen, it should probably happen, but let's not do it for the wrong reason, or do it the wrong way.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner Bertram, I said website, but probably administration will figure out where to put it, but the Facebook page is probably where we get the most eyeballs.
Yeah, I agree, print media just isn't as impactful as it used to be, and we all know that, so.
But I still would use it, Mr. Chairman, I mean, people, a fair amount of people still do respond to that.
Were you going to continue on, did you, or were you wrapping things up here?
No, if there are other questions, otherwise, thanks again for having us.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure, I'll just, so quickly, if questions come up later, our email and phone, go to my and Matt's desk, and Mark obviously knows how to get ahold of us as well.
I asked about the proliferation of solar, of wind, but what about the solar, because we have a large number of solar gardens and proposals in Stearns County, will we see encouragement now to have more solar, do you think, in Stearns County, is that going to be moving forward?
So, community solar gardens, the small, you know, three to five acre, seven acre sites that you see, those actually connect at the distribution level, we don't own those, so, really, none of them, those are all, you know, third-party, we've signed what's called a PPA, Power Purchase Agreement.
Correct, but what I'm saying is that, will this give us more potential to expand that network?
Again, they connect a distribution, not transmission, so the large, these projects we're talking about are going to connect at transmission level, so, it's different, is it going to encourage or discourage? I don't think so. You know, the community solar garden program has been very prolific, there are hundreds of projects in the queue yet, you're going to continue to see those grow, yes.
Okay, and we had a national conference out in DC in February, and I attended a workshop that was specifically related to EV, and they were talking about moving forward with all the EV charging stations, they were talking about getting all these vehicles on the roads and, you know, moving away from internal combustion. With that, I asked the question, where's all this energy going to come from, and how are we going to be able to supply this energy? And they said, "We don't know." And so, my question is, if we switch, if with this 2040 plan and moving on to EV, are we going to be able to handle the capacity if everybody wants to have an electric car and have that car plugged in in their home, or at the charging stations, are we going to be able to keep up with demand or not?
Yeah, and you're correct, EV adoption is, you know, as exciting as that is for the electric utility industry, it's a revenue stream, a, you know, a source of, you know, customers' use that we've really never seen before, proper adoption, and yeah, if we literally went to 50% EVs tomorrow, yeah, you're right, the grid is not prepared for that, there is no doubt, I can tell you, there are scores of teams across the company, across the country, that are collaborating on this effort, because you're absolutely right, it has to be done correctly, we all can't go home at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night and plug our cars in and have it be done at the same time, we know that, I mean, there's, that's why with smart meters that are going to be rolled out, they're being rolled out in the metro area as we speak, they'll probably be coming to greater Minnesota next year or in 2025, but those meters have a far greater flexibility in monitoring, because you need to stagger when all those cars charge at overnight, so, studies show 80% of public charging or EV charging will occur in the home, you know, there's still, we all travel, we all go to the cities, we all take road trips, you're going to have to have a network where you're going to pull to a rest stop or whatever, you're going to charge your car, much like you stop at a gas station, so, yeah, integrating that correctly, there's a lot of people pouring into it, I'm sure, like any big change like this, people are nervous, but it is being studied and addressed.
Yeah, and we want to have that coordination, so the right and left hand are working together, so.
Well, we're, yep, trying.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, appreciate the presentation, thanks, Mark.
Thank you for having us, appreciate your time.
Yep. We went ahead, we did take our break, and so we're going to go ahead, we'll move on to Auditor Treasurer, Randy?
Yeah, Randy Schreifel, Stearns County Auditor Treasurer, with me today is Sarah Uch, our County Finance Director, I'm going to turn this over to her in a little bit, but, so this is talking about the 2018 debt that we have, this is the last bond we have on the books, and we have the opportunity to defees this or pay this off early, this was originally a $9.5 million debt that was the service center remodel, and the call date, if we did do nothing, the next opportunity would be 2025, and then if we just let it run, it runs through 2031, so with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah, and she'll go over the pros and cons of doing this early, so.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Sarah Uch, Finance Director in the Auditor Treasurer's Office. So on packet page 74, which I put up on the screen so that we can see what I'm talking about here, kind of gives the two options that we have here at the county, the first one is to do nothing at this time and to just wait until 2025, which is our first opportunity to pay it off early. What that does is it caps our investment earnings at 2.14%, because there is a compliance requirement called arbitrage, that when you take out, when you take bonds out, any money that you levy for debt service and goes into your debt service fund, the interest earnings are restricted to that bond yield, and that, for this bond was 2.14%, so as we've continued to levy for debt service, looking forward to the future, to future debt, all of the cash that we have accumulated in our debt service fund is subjected to this arbitrage requirement. So with interest rates returning, and us having the opportunity to invest funds at, sometimes in a 3.8% to 4% investment earning range, we thought it would be prudent to look at if we get rid of our cash now, if you will, to defees the bonds now, or if we wait two years, what does that do to our investment portfolio, and what does that do to our overall debt? The biggest pro to, or benefit to doing this early, doing this now, is that it takes the restriction off of that cash that we have in the debt service fund, so right now, we have $7.5 million in our debt service fund, those dollars are restricted to only paying debt, that is all we can do with them at the county. If we defees this, which means.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Oh, go ahead.
So then if, so then, having that, we could make a purchase with that for other items in lieu of then not having to borrow, so we have to use it only for debt?
You can only use it for debt, yep.
Okay, that was going to be a question later, so now I can forget about that question.
And you can only earn up to 2.14% in investment earnings, and anything that you earn above that, the IRS, we file an IRS return annually, called an arbitrage report, and that, they do require us to pay the IRS, in essence, a tax for earning above the interest levels. Mike?
Well, just quickly, Mr. Chair, in answer to that question too, is one of the reasons, the major reason that we're accumulating a balance here is with the looming major project we have with the jail, and so we want to keep this as flexible as possible as we move forward, we could use this to begin to purchase properties, we could use it to begin design, those kinds of things, that are really why we're accumulating these dollars, not necessarily to pay debt.
Right. So as I was saying, you have the two options here, if you go right down to the bottom line and just cut to the cash balance and at the end of 2025, you can see it's not much different, really, based on our outlook and what we think we can earn in the market today, our cash balance of just waiting until 2025 gets us a cash balance of 4.88 million. If we, if we set up an escrow account now and deposit, deposit our cash in there to pay off the debt early, we'll end up what we estimate as 4.9 million, so as you can see, it's not a large difference, but what it does do is it frees up that cash balance that we have, should we decide to move forward with a justice center or some other big project that we normally would bond for, we can free up that cash to be using for that, it takes the restriction off of that cash. So I think what we were looking at today, and I can answer any questions, is just an approval from the board for Randy to move forward with the financial advisor and draft up the resolution that would be needed, and the escrow agreement that would, that would allow us to pay those bonds off now, if you will. So we can have a discussion or any questions on that?
This is somewhat a preliminary approval, so we don't, we're not wasting time, effort, and dollars in doing this refinancing, some of it will come back to you for final approval.
Okay.
So realistically, it's just to take advantage of a higher interest rate market.
Yep, and to free up the restriction on the cash that we have.
Sure.
That's it, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I said this at the Justice Center meetings, I value and appreciate the Auditor Treasurer's Office, I mean, we're not going to have any debt, and that's, that's a surprise to me, and I'm happy to hear that, so, I think, just like in people's lives, whenever they can pay off a debt earlier, they do it, and I guess I'd be in support of what Randy's recommending and the department's recommending.
So, Mr. Chair, and Mike, do you, are you looking for a motion or a sense from the board?
No, a motion.
A motion would be good.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
You had a motion and a second to continue the financing plan here on the debt, any other questions or discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, you have something else?
That's all I have.
Oh, okay. Okay, environmental. Shelley Angie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, and Angie Berg on the first item for our agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Angie Berg, Environmental Services.
Good morning.
Good morning, the request for you today is to consider authorize setting a public hearing for May 18th, I'm sorry, May 9th, to amend the Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230. This amendment would basically require that any minor subdivision submitted in a 12-month period be considered a major subdivision, so under the county subdivision ordinance, if you remember, five to 10 years ago, probably 10 by now, we allowed for minor plats, and so minor plats do not go to the Planning Commission, they do not go to the County Board, they're done administratively for ease of the property owner and time and cost. So we have a situation where we may be seeing a minor, a minor plat rather, come in where the intent is it for to be a major plat, so, the idea is to have a 12-month waiting period, if you will, so, we're asking today for the board to consider setting that public hearing for May 9th.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move that.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second to go ahead and move that, now let's open that up for discussion? Can you? Oh, we got, I think we got one.
You can let him second it.
We'll put a third on.
That's fine, there you go, a third.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to doing the bigger thing, but what you and I kind of asked, and I thought Chad might be here, he's maybe listening to us, Chad May, what we kind of asked for was an immediate moratorium on a smaller slice of this, and you had a conversation with Chad May and Mike about that, that's what, I guess, Joe and I thought we'd see in the agenda for the accessory buildings within the shoreline, evidently we had some in Albany, other locations, if we don't do that part, what we were hoping to see would be an immediate moratorium on that slice of it, and then this is the larger picture, which, again, I have no problem with doing that, a six, but timing is everything, and we all know why, so I guess I'm not sure how to, if we split it, do two motions, or do we just do this, and then time is smart?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I guess we're not aware of why a moratorium is, I mean, I guess I haven't seen anything, so, I guess I'm just going off of staff recommendation, I mean.
And generally, Mr. Chair, we don't do moratoriums without having a public meeting of, or hearing of any kind, I mean, it's, it wouldn't be giving anybody notice, it makes it unpredictable, I mean, there's lots of things, I'm not, I don't have enough information to vote on something like that.
And, Mr. Chairman, again, I'm still learning the process, and I always get nervous when I hear normally, and we don't do that, I don't know, you know, Commissioner Knott, I don't know why you're not informed, why, what's going on, I don't know how people share things, but we've been directly told, you're going to, if we're, if you're not going to do this, we're going to do that, and so, everything I was pounding in my head in planning was, be proactive, don't be reactive, but yet, when we make a decision, and then we're told, "Well, no matter what your decision is, we're going to do it anyway," that's where this, but I'm, I'm fine with that, but let's not be surprised when we've denied something, and then it starts happening because we didn't do something, so, I'm not opposed to, again, this is a bigger issue, this is legitimate, but what we started the conversation with, Joe and I, one, because he's on planning, two, because it's in my district, and then I assume that that stuff gets shared, but it obviously doesn't, we can do this, and then we'll just, we know what's going to happen by waiting, so we can wait.
And, Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I don't think you're intending to make it sound normally to do a bad thing, we have a process, we do a process, and we don't, for the public good, for landowners, for everybody else, giving people notice about what may be coming and for them to give input is a really pretty important piece, and honestly, if we went much further, we'd be in violation of a meeting law, so it makes sense, the two of you had some conversations, but the middle, then any of the rest of us start talking, then we have an open meeting violation too, so we just have to be really careful about how we're doing this, and we're not talking about a long period of time.
My understanding though too is that we can do an emergency moratorium without a meeting, but that is, you know, has to be an emergency, and because of the situation that I'm thinking that we're dealing with here, the moratorium would not have an effect on moving it forward or not, so, I don't see that, that need, however, the bigger question about having our ordinance looked at and our ordinance changed, we do have that need, and we do have to pursue that, because I think, unless we make some corrections, we'll have some unattended consequences in development, and whether it be for the environment or for the communities, it would have a negative effect, so, I'm good with going with the recommendation, and we'll move this forward. Are there any other questions on that?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, appreciate your clarifying, yes, if we had an emergency that we needed to do something about, that'd be one thing, so, appreciate.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, okay, thank Angie.
Mr. Chair, our next item, Mark Lateral will be here, presenting on the potential loan program, and we also have Sarah Uch who's here for questions as well, so I will turn it over to Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I think we forgot to welcome Shelley back, so, welcome back.
Shelley, good to see you, yes.
Thank you.
Are you back just for today, are you back?
I'm back part-time.
Okay, well, we appreciate the part.
Mr. Chair, board members, Mark Lateral, Environmental Services. I will be speaking to the request for an acceptance of the Clean Water Partnership Loan Agreement. Back about a year ago, I was given some verbal direction to start looking at possibly seeking funding from the state that'll help property owners afford and finance replacement septic systems. So through the Clean Water Partnership Loan Agreement, our loan program with the state, I reached out to the Pollution Control Agency, figured out what we needed to do in order to get a work plan created and submitted. Back on March 7th, this board approved a resolution that allowed me to submit that application and work plan to the Pollution Control Agency for consideration for eligibility determination. Then, so on March 14th, I did submit that. March 17th, we were notified that the work plan was approved and Sterns became eligible for a loan request. Then on March 24th, the PCA did make the Clean Water Program Loan Agreement available to us. What they approved for us to receive was $750,000 in funding at a 1.5% rate for seven years. The program itself has about $3.5 million in loan funds available for, through the program, and then once 75% of a loan is issued out, we could re-up for another $500,000 if so, if we so chose to. Environmental Services has been working with the Audit and Treasurers Office, Randy and Sarah, to jointly identify and develop, coordinate the internal loan process along with the parameters and second-tier loans that will be offered to Stearns County residents. The anticipated is that loans will be offered as second-tier loans at a 3% rate for seven years. Repayment to those loans would come back as special assessments on the property tax statements, so that's how the county would recoup the payments. As part of the required loan agreement with the PCA, Stearns County does need to issue a general obligation promissory note as evidence of commitment to the loan. Sarah Och helped us engage the legal bond counsel to issue that, to issue a legal opinion and issue the note in accordance with the PCA requirements. There are two resolutions before you today that we're asking the board to consider and sign. The second resolution is what authorizes issuance of the note and specifying the requirements around repayment for the agreement. The issuance of this general obligation note will not impact the county debt limit or calculations, and it's backed entirely by the special assessment revenues that will be collected from the property owners as repayment of the loan. So then the final steps of this whole process that we've had in going is authorization and approval of the two resolutions before you. One, the first one will authorize Randy to execute the agreement. It'll allow Sarah to make draws on that loan. And then the secondary resolution is the one that speaks to all the financial terms. We then, Sterns then needs to provide the PCA with the general obligation note, certified copies of the resolutions, and an opinion from a recognized bond counsel. So, Mr. Chair, we asked this morning of the board to consider to approve and authorize you to sign those resolutions in order for us to accept and continue and put this funding mechanism in place, so.
You want to do questions or the motion first?
I'm gonna make questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Who decides who gets the loan? What's that process? It's maybe in here, I can't find it.
Right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, there is an application that landowners would fill out and submit. It's, anyone would be eligible for it, basically. The application would be submitted to the Environmental Service Office, and then we, the Environmental Service Office, along with Audit and Treasurers Office, through our internal process, will determine eligibility and then approval if authorized.
It's not based, Mr. Chairman, solely on income?
There is no income limits. There only, the only, the only restrictions is it can't be for new construction. It can't be used to refinance an existing loan for septic system that they've already got financing for, and it can't be for a enforcement action.
That makes sense. I think this is good. Is there a cost for the note? Sarah? The note?
I think we're anticipating it to cost a couple thousand dollars in legal fees, just because we had to receive a legal opinion on it, but otherwise, it doesn't appear so.
Can we do both motions in one, or do we want to do them separately?
You can do them both in one.
I'll make a motion that we approve both resolutions.
And I'll second it. Comment?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you remember, last year, we met with the septic installers, designers, and one of the issues was a program like this, which other counties had in place. So I guess I appreciated that the county, you know, took that and kind of ran with it, and hopefully we get this put in place and another tool in the toolbox, hopefully to help our residents.
I agree. Especially if we're looking at protecting environment and folks wanting to be able to do that, it gives them that opportunity, so. Other discussion items on that? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good morning, Ben. You've been waiting.
Morning.
Hope you've enjoyed the meeting.
Yeah, very interesting. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Ben Anderson, Parks Director for Stearns County. The agenda item I have for you today is just an update on our parks, trails, and recreation comprehensive master plan. There is no action required. We'll have a little bit of discussion as we go through. So just a quick introduction, background, and goals of the plan. So our, the Stearns County Parks Department employs seven full-time staff and 21 seasonal staff, and we maintain about 19 recreational units, which includes approximately 2,600 acres of property and 100 miles of recreational corridor. The background to the plan, so the Stearns County Parks and Recreation Plan was last updated in May of 1989. That's 34 years ago. So an update to this plan is very well warranted, especially considering I was three years old when this was adopted the last time. So the overall goals of the plan is that we want a plan that effectively guides the county for the next 10 to 20 years in the acquisition, development, management, and maintenance of parks and recreational areas, our trails, facilities, our amenities, and the programs, as well as we want to address, you know, future funding, issues, concerns, and identify potential future funding sources, and then the equitable allocation of our resources. We also want to make sure that we have a plan that is applicable to both the current and projected conditions of our county, the state and regional statuses as well. And then we also want to make sure the plan reflects our, the county's mission and values and the parks departments as well. So a little bit on the project process and the schedule. So in December of 2022 is when we kicked the project off. We had previously hired in October HKGI, the same company that did the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the county. Currently, we're about four months into our 11-month proposed process, so we anticipate ending this, well, having a, at least a, the final draft document coming to the County Board of Commissioners for consideration, sometimes towards the end of October, early November. The overall schedule is based into five phases. So Phase 1 has been completed, and that was the project organization and the kickoff, and we'll see some of that, that material that's been developed here a little bit later in the, in the presentation. We're currently in Phase 2 and in Phase 3, and Phase 2 is the inventory and conditions and the evaluation of our, of our current system. And Phase 3 is that needs assessment. And to me, this Phase 3 is the most important part of this entire plan. This is where we want to hear from the county residents, our park users, our trail users, on what they see as a needs, the wants, the desires for our park system moving forward. You know, where are we potentially missing assets and things like that throughout the county? Phase 4 is the system recommendations and the schedule, which will begin in that midsummer after we've collected the majority. We're not going to stop gathering data, public input, till probably, most likely, the second week in August, because that's when our, the final biggest public event that we have at Quarry Park with the Rock Your Soul Run, and typically, we see about 1,000 to 1,200 people attend that run. And we want to gather as much input as we can. So then that's when we'll start putting that, that portion of it together. And then Phase 5, we'll start at the end of summer, and that's the development and implementation of the plan and the system plan. And again, we expect this to be completed sometimes toward the end of October, that early part of November. So who's overseeing the initial, the plan? So we've got the, identified a steering committee, and their roles are to attend and participate in approximately 10 meetings throughout the project process, basically once a month. And their role is really to guide the planning process, to assist with the public engagement portion of this plan, and to listen to the others, the constituents, park users, what they're hearing on the ground, and then ultimately provide the feedback on the draft materials and the draft plan sections. So who's makes up this steering committee? So we have three park commissioners that have been identified. We have one Stearns County Commissioner, Commissioner Persky, who serves as the liaison for the county board to the park commission. We have two county park staff. We have one staff member from Environmental Services, and then the consultants. Here's just a brief look at the steering committee's schedule and the different agenda items and the topics that they have been and will be discussing as they move through. So public engagement plan that was put together, our strengths, weaknesses, and the threats activity, SWAT activity. And each month, there's different things. A peer county review as well, identify different counties that are similar or have park systems without, throughout greater Minnesota, just to see how we compare. So to highlight a little bit more on the public engagement piece of this, because this is the most important part of this plan. So Phase 1 engagement, this began in January. The initial kickoff was at our Moonlight Ski Event. And really, this is, this Phase 1 is to provide that awareness of the project, obtain a broad-based input on the issues and opportunities, complete online outreach methods that are currently live and will be open for the next few months throughout, throughout the Stearns County Fair and most likely into that second week of August. And then also identify the stakeholders and have meetings and interviews with those stakeholder groups, such as our archery folks, our disc golf groups, Natural Resource Base, Minnesota DNR, and those types of entities. And certainly, if you have ideas on people that you'd like to see us meet with, you know, please send me an email, send me those groups, and we'll do our best to get those people invited to those activities.
Then if I, if I may, Commissioners, I volunteered us to perhaps serve, as you can see, that includes the county fair, but also we had mentioned potential, perhaps, at summertime by George, that we'd maybe would have a table that we would encourage the people from the park commission and maybe Commissioners ourselves, if we want to take a day like we do at the fair, and sit there and engage in folks that we know and folks that we, we don't know to, to take a look and to see what their park needs are and maybe participate in the survey. So we'll be asking maybe for some participation when it comes summertime, so.
Right. The big portion of this and what I believe was identified in the 2040 plan and what we're seeing and hearing from the consultants as well, is it's better to go out and meet people at the community events that are already organized and get people there than try and invite them into an open house style, where you typically only get, you know, 5, 10, you know, 20, 30 on a, on a good night to show up to those. So we really want to get out into the community. So if you have those events that are coming up in your local area, or if you're going to, and we'll touch on some of the material here a little bit later that's available, but if you're going to meetings and things like that, we have handouts in that, which I will get to you, that you can utilize to help us spread the word on this effort as well. So Phase 2 of the engagement is planned for the early fall, and that's when we'll ask for input on the draft recommendations that have come from all of the Phase 1 engagement activities that we've completed. So what are some of the options for people to get involved? So we've, as part of this, we, HKGI put together an online survey. It's a survey of nine questions. To date, we've had over 550 responses to that survey, so we're doing well. I'd like to, we obviously want to see that number grow as, as large as we can. So this is, be continued. The survey will be open again, at least through the end of July, most likely through that second week of August. They've also developed an interactive mapping tool. So as a part of this, that, and this is a really cool feature, and I would encourage people to utilize this, is that if you go to this, you can actually zoom in on specific areas of the county. You can zoom in on specific area, on specific parks, specific sections of trail, things like that, and you can actually add your comments in there. So if there's like an, an area that a resident feels there should be a county park within the county, they can make that comment on here, and then people can react, either like or dislike, or add their own comment to it as well. They can zoom into Mississippi River County Park, and if they don't like the location of one of the trails, because it's always flooded out, they could potentially suggest that maybe we reroute a trail in certain locations, or if they wanted to see a new disc golf course somewhere. So this is really where people can go in and really have that interactive and give our, the exact ideas on what they would like to see within the county. And then also, we put together a project webpage, and the purpose of the project webpage is really the landing spot where people can go. They can find out about the project purpose, the timeline, what their role is, and then what our existing system. Obviously, they can go out to our, our county parks webpage and find all that information as well, but this also has the links to all of these, the survey and the interactive map as well. And if they have more, want to find out more information, this is where they can go for that. So the promotion and outreach. So this is the, the documents I was talking about earlier. So we have developed a set of talking points that is available, not only for the steering committee members, but also I'll get it out to the county commissioners so that you have that as well. We've also developed this postcard and flyers that are, that have been hung out within our parks and our posts and signs and in our park buildings. We've also met with the county communications team to get the, these posters and signs put out through our administration building and the West Side Service Center, as well as the last time we did a big social media outreach was in that, excuse me, January timeframe. So as the snows, melts, and it resnails and it remelts again, but people are starting to think more about getting outside and being in our parks. Now is a good time to get that information back out there. So we'll be doing that here in the next week or two as well, trying to get more participation within those surveys and, and on that interactive map. And then again, this in-person pop-up meetings. So like I said before, we want to get out into the county. We want to meet their residents where they're at to get their input, because it, we tend to get better responses if we're going to them rather than asking them to come to us. So again, if you have ideas, community events and things that you'd like to see us at, please email those to me, or if residents have a, want to get in contact with me because they have suggestions, please let us know, and we'll do our best to get out there. We do have two iPads that we've got from the IT department, so people don't have to have their own device. However, we will have a QR code, too, in those locations, so they can just quickly do it themselves. So a few of the tasks that have been completed also to date. So the consultants have reviewed and put together a summary of previous planning documents. They've done a, and updated the demographics analysis and done some mapping for us. They've completed countywide park and trail mapping. They've also done the parks, our park facilities inventory, the peer county comparison, and then just put together a summary of trends in recreation. So I'm going to hit on a couple of these, just a little bit more in detail. So the mapping and analysis task that has been completed, this review and summary of previous planning documents. So we asked the consultant to go through and look at not only local, but our regional and state planning documents that revolve around parks and trails. So these documents include, not only include our master plans for like our Rockville or Quarry Park, Lake Wobegon Trail, bikeway plans, but it also includes the Regional Active Living Plan for Benton, Stearns, and Sherburne. It also includes the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission Strategic Plan and the overall state plant, park plans, to see how our system ties in, what can we potentially do, what do we maybe need to add, what are we missing as it relates to all of these documents? So we're not only just looking local, locally, we're also looking at a regional and state level, because we have parks that rise to all of these different amenities. level, because we have parks that rise to all of these different amenities. They've completed the countywide park and trail mapping and inventory and what we, we have so far, so they're putting together some really neat, clean maps, as you can see on the screen here, in which they identify the parks and trails that Stearns County specifically manages. There is another map that's not in this presentation, but also shows where our WMAs, the WPAs, and then the local city parks and trails, and the state park, state trails, and how those all connections come into play as well, to show, you know, how our system fits in, like, again, not only at the local level, but the regional and state-wide, statewide The other piece that we've asked the consultants to do is to do some service area mapping. And this is a mapping of, of drive-time service areas of just various types of amenities and that we offer and facilities through, through our parks and trail system. So things like boat land launches, camping areas, picnic shelters, regional trails, ski trails, and really the hopes, or what we, we will get out of these maps is that we'll be able to identify certain areas where, you know, it's not an equitable travel distance for residents to get to, say, a hiking trail, camping facility, things like that. We are both looking at both publicly provided amenities and privately. So say like there's public and private campground, so we'll be looking at both of those to see how and where those gaps may or may not fit in throughout the system. The peer county comparison, it's a collection of data and comparison related to the number of parks, park acres, trails, facilities, programs, staff, budget, and, and much, much, much more. You can see that the dark areas on the map here are the counties where they were, most of the counties where they were able to get additional data from on what their park systems look like. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, obviously, because Stearns County is one of the, if not the largest county in, well, currently, we'll see what happens in the future in greater Minnesota. But when we start looking at the numbers, when we're doing averages and percentages and things like that, is where we'll be able to tell that story. So to date, a little bit of the project deliverables that have been completed, again, that outreach and the engagement materials that we previously saw, and then we've come up with the document template. So what are our next steps from here? We're going to continue the mapping and the analysis tasks, but I'm going to continue to do the ongoing engagement through the spring and into the summer. And really, like I said, we're just ramping up into that really heavily portion where we want to gather as much information as we can to help guide this planning process. The monthly meetings with the steering committee will continue. This next bullet point, so we're looking at our June and August park commission meetings. We want to invite the county commissioners to attend those meetings if you're available, so that we can give you the updates on where we're at, get the feedback from the, both the park commission and the county commissioners. So please watch your email inboxes and your calendars for those invites, and we hope you'll be able to, to join us at those two meetings for that. We want to give you the opportunity, obviously, to see the material, review the material, comment on, you know, things maybe you'd like to see us try, or, or different aspects of the plan as we move forward before we come in, in October, November, with that final plan for your review. And then, yeah, we'll continue to, as we move closer to the end of the 11-month process, the draft plan and recommendations will come out in the late summer, early fall, and we'll ask for that public input on the overall recommendations at that point. So this is a, an effort that we're extremely excited about. It's going to, when it's all said and done, give us the, the direction that our county residents want us to go with our parks and trails master plan. And, and yeah, so we hope to get as much public input as we can. And with that, I'll take questions.
Okay. Questions for Dan, for Ben? I will tell you, the park commission is very excited about this. I'm excited about this. There, there are good ideas out there too that we haven't considered that we've already heard too, so, yeah, as far as moving things forward, it, it's, it's a good time to get that information and see what, what we can do. I think we have a great parks, uh, opportunity for, across the county for many and many different activities, and we can only make it better, so. Commissioner Nod.
I, I was just going to ask, I'm assuming this will be on the county website if they want to do the survey? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think it's really exciting. It reminds me of when we were going through the, the comp planning process, just in terms of opportunities for input. I just said, another potential place to consider getting input would be a Breakfast on the Farm, I think. We have it again this year. Summertime by George will definitely be a really good place, as well as the fair. If you can think of ways that we can help with getting this out, I mean, I know you said the cards will be great to get cards, we can post it, et cetera. So just keep, keep us surprised about what we can do. The survey is great. I just actually took it while you were going through this, just because I wanted to see what it was like. It's, it's pretty easy, it gives people an opportunity to really give some input. And the interactive piece on the map, that's another thing, somebody can go deeper. I know we've done that sometimes with transportation planning. So if, if somebody needs a deeper dive, like thinking about the archery at Mississippi River, helpful for people to pinpoint it. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for your work on this, as well as the other people on the steering committee.
Mr. Chairman, Ben, remind me what the plan cost again?
In total, we're right around $86,000 total.
And then can you share the link, just the direct link, that people don't have to go through the county website for the survey? Because I'll share that on my social media, on my column and things like that. But, but I've been trying to figure out, and I haven't gotten the answer, is how do we get the people that don't use the parks to get their input? Why aren't you using the parks? What, what could we do for you to use the parks? Because ultimately, if we have the resource, we want to be able to utilize it. And with Woken Property and other potential properties coming on board, this plan is very timely to make sure that we develop those parks in a way that people will want to use them and can use them more effectively. So I don't know what that is, other than just being available at those summertime, you know, those kinds of events that maybe people that don't use the parks hopefully will, but usually you go to a booth or something when you're interested in it. Let's all think about how we can reach people that aren't interested in it, and I don't know what that is, but I think that input would be extremely valuable.
Mr. Chair, along those lines, you may, just because the libraries came and did one of their updates for us today, perhaps there, some of the cards could be at our different places. Granted, those are folks that are also engaged in some way, they're going into a library, but it might actually get some, some families and some seniors and others who haven't normally participated.
Yeah, I think you both are correct. You know, we've got those enthusiasts, whether it be at the library or those at the parks, but there are people that maybe don't know the opportunities that are there. Boy, once they see them, they would take advantage of it.
What can we do to get them down?
Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions? I just have one for you, Ben. Can you just stick around? We're at the end of the meeting here, I do want to talk to you.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
There's only three activities the county is engaged in that can be termed recreational, and those are parks, museum, and library. Those, in my opinion, are among the easier cells that we get involved in. So, and, and you have to have some of that as a produce results attributable to something like quality of life, which you can't really quantify, but certainly out there. This has been a hell of a discussion this morning. We just, we're going to turn this into a recreational format if you guys keep this up.
The next item we have is by issues. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you're talking, if you want to keep talking, I'll let you continue.
I'll let you, the other four confuse additional issues.
All right. Mr. Bertram.
Mr. Chairman, just two quick questions. One, I wasn't aware that the chair doesn't review the agenda before the agenda gets set. Anything I've ever been on, that's always kind of worked, maybe would have caught the minute stuff or anything, but just an FRI, I don't know if you do that or if you want to do that, just would seem to make sense, it wouldn't be bad to have the chair review the agenda before we do it, but for whatever it's worth. And then how do we do the budget process? When do we start that?
Commissioner Bertram, the budget process, we, we will start it internally in, end of April, in May, and then the first look that the board will get will go through performance measures, and then a, a short look at the numbers, and then a, a longer look at the numbers in August. And then you have September where you have opportunities for meetings, and then, of course, you don't adopt until December.
Because, again, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, how soon we can get involved, but being new, the sooner I can get information, the better I'll, for, because Commissioner Lenzmeyer has already forewarned me, you can't just be against things or for reducing the budget, you have to have reasons why. So I want enough time to know why, to meet Commissioner Lenzmeyer's standard. I've watched enough meetings to know what he's going to say, so.
The budget process in odd years, you know, we're in 2023, the budget process typically starts just a little bit later than in even numbered years, because then we'll have the results of legislative actions and how that impacts us. So this year, it's starting on a timely basis. And relative to review of the agenda prior to a meeting, pretty much is akin to a cattle call, because once the budget comes out, and if we have comments to add, or, or ideas to add to it, then we can bring that forth. And an example for this meeting, and an excellent example was the discussion of the moment of silence, uh, reaction. I asked the, the question and got a response from Joe and Dr. Willie, so, and then, you know, then the rest of you chimed in. But I don't want to necessarily make it much more formal than that. If you look at the budget, any of us ought to be able to add our two bits to the discussion.
Okay. With, with response to the agenda, we've all sat in the chair, and so we know that, you know, you have to have your A-game on when you're sitting in the chair. And so I wouldn't see no problem with, if we, if the chair would see the agenda a day before it comes out in general. My point would be is just, that would be an overview, just to say, I thought we had something else that we were going to discuss. If we had missed anything, that we would be able to get that on there. But I would be willing to take, you know, have the chair take that on, just as a quick, quick look before it gets released, so.
We'll get it same time we do.
Right, we all, we get it before the public does. So everybody should take a look at it before the public sees it, if there's something missing.
I don't think we get it Thursdays anymore, do we?
Did you hear me? Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we used to get it Thursday before it got published on Friday, right?
Right, so we can make sure we're getting it on Thursday.
Are you suggesting that hasn't been happening, or?
I haven't.
I haven't either.
Yeah. It used, we used to get it Thursday, and then we could review it, and then before the public one went out Friday, and you can make a change or something, but I guess I haven't been getting it on Thursday.
And I think that's been a very recent thing, so it could have been with staffing changes, so maybe we just need to make sure it's happened.
Thank you for telling me that. Yeah, I didn't realize that wasn't happening.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I guess I don't, I guess my question is, I'm getting them on Friday, but, and then, of course, usually I don't have time to look at it until Saturday or Sunday, but if there's some changes before the, but I'm not talking about all of us, once the agenda is set, is it set, or what time do we have where we can say, oh, you missed this or that, before it becomes a pub? That's what I was thinking, and I thought the chair would be the conduit potentially for that, but however you want to do it.
Just give you an example of where we added something after the fact, and that was my point. I don't think we're missing any opportunities. I do, I think, isn't, is there any legal limitation or statutory prohibitions from doing it the way we are now, if an individual commissioner wants to tack on something?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, this board has chosen not to delegate that to a board chair.
Right, right.
And, and, and so that's the way that, that we proceed, and you, you, you have a chance to alter the agenda before the meeting, and, and that's done and open in the public, not in the background. So that's just the process that we followed. The board can add items to the agenda, they can subtract items from the agenda before the meeting. You, you, you know, the agenda is yours as presented to you. So that's, that's really the opportunity that, that you've historically used to make it, make changes to the agenda. The other, the other thing is that, you know, if there's, if there's something that is not on the agenda, that a commissioner would, wants to see what typically has happened, it's been brought up at a, a meeting prior, and the request has been made to put that item on in a future agenda. So, so that the whole board is, is acting in that process to create that future agenda, rather than one commissioner being able to add something to the agenda.
Well, I, I would be concerned about adding things day of if it requires input from staff, because then, then we're, we're doing surprise information and they're not prepared, and, and I think that would be unfair to staff and, and, and giving them the opportunity to prepare.
Yeah, which has been typically, it's been put on a future agenda, if somebody wants to see something on an agenda.
Right. And Mr. Chair, I think we, in general, have done really pretty well about figuring out what's timeliness, both in response to legal timelines for a property owner, grant timelines, you know, all of those kinds of things. And, you know, some of us process out loud, it's, we must take a deliberate process, and so we need time for that. If we're able to get back to getting those on Thursday, then that means members have an opportunity on Friday to be contacting staff as well as Monday, because where it gets hard a little bit is if we have a holiday on a Monday, we have a board meeting the day after. I know that doesn't happen all that often, but I, for one, don't really want to contact staff at home, and so being able to get, get some questions answered is a good thing. And we do have a whole lot of, and maybe at some point we'll have a work session where we go through it. We have processes that we have adopted, and it's probably good for all of us to be reminded of what those are, because it, otherwise, we could end up, it could feel like we're just, we're in a, oh, gosh, we, we need to do this now, where we, in general, like being somewhat deliberative and yet timely.
Right, and, and we all have our personal committee assignments, where we may have knowledge of something that is timely and the others do not, so we need to get that on there.
We got flooding season now. And, and in the past, I have experienced situations that needed immediate action. So the, the flexible format we got has, definitely has benefit. And if you bring up something that the rest of the crew absolutely, positively doesn't want to get involved in, I, I haven't, I wouldn't describe any of you in terms of your personality as being shy, so I think we're covered.
Okay. We'll continue on.
Yeah, well, that's good. I was just saying, certainly, other counties do it differently, but that's what we've done.
So a couple things. One, Lee, you just brought up part of this with the flooding season. I know that even here in town, we have a number of places that are on the socket along the Mississippi that are already struggling, as well as throughout, so really appreciate the updates we're getting from Aaron Tufti and the more that we can do. I, as usual, worry about Antones this time of year, because it's harder to go eat there, and I worry for them. That would be my, as light as I could be about flooding, because it's, it is a pretty big worry. The other thing is, because some of this is, could very well be close to decided before we are back together, is that we got a, a couple of alerts from AMC, both about transportation and probation funding, one of which is happening today. So remind people to be reaching out, those are both really important. And that's it.
Commissioner Nod.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Ben Anderson from Parks and Chad and myself will be meeting in Meyer Grove on. will be meeting in Meyer Grove on Thursday at one o'clock with, uh, dealing with the regional rail and the farmers that, you know, have been farming along that trail. So I guess we kinda collaborated with them to say, let's, let's meet and hear everybody out and kinda get a, you know, feel for where both sides are at, so hopefully, you know, we, we don't have as many issues going forward with, you know, farming along the trail. And then also, uh, I know Thursday night we have that, that land use planning on, in the West Service Center, I think, at 5:30. I did mention Angie, I do have a Tri-Cab Board meeting from 4:30 to 7:30, so I probably won't be there, or unless we get down early, then I'll pop over. But, other than that, that's all I have for right now.
I just have a couple of things, uh, and that is, uh, we, we have a challenge going on, uh, Commissioners. We're being challenged by other counties to clean up the Mississippi, so, uh, we're making an effort. There's gonna be a cleanup at our, our parks on the Mississippi, as well as an opportunity for landowners along the Mississippi to, to collect things along their property lines, and we'll be, uh, collecting that and having them take it up to Mississippi River Park to dispose of, to, to get that river cleaned up. So, um, there's an opportunity also for you, if you wanted to come up to one of the parks and help clean up, uh, you can do that as well. And then finally, I just, uh, wanna go back to the way we started the meeting, and, and that was, uh, with the loss of Sheriff Deputy Owen from Pope County. Definitely, uh, wanna, you know, express our sincere sympathies to that family, and, and then also just reflect that we, you know, certainly appreciate what our officers do and, 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 and the impact it has on their families as well when they're on duty. So, um, let's just keep that in mind, um, uh, as, as we move forward. And, uh, we certainly do want our, our, our officers to be safe, so.
With that, law enforcement violence is no longer just an urban phenomenon. It's, uh, I guess that's, uh, the surprising slash disappointing, uh, reaction I personally had, and I don't think that's unique. Steve, can you reiterate the point you were making about what you're doing Thursday?
Oh, um, so we had, the Parks Department, or like Regional Rail had sent out the letter to property owners along the rail about, um, farming in the, the rail corridor.
Yeah.
So, and this, for the last few years, Regional Rail has been sending out letters to the farmers.
Yeah.
So I guess I approached Chad, and I said, well, Chad, maybe, um, after speaking to some of the farmers in Western Stearns County, I said, maybe we need to have a meet and greet or a picnic, if you, you know, a get together, so that, you know, both sides can be heard, you know, because, you know, the farmers have been farming that ground for a long time. Guy called me yesterday and said his dad, the railroad back in the day said, yeah, you know, you can farm on it, but if we ever have to fix something, you know, we, we're gonna go on the land. So, you know, and I think it's, it's just allowing the, the property owners close to the, the rail or the trail to, uh, just kinda discuss their thoughts, and, and also for Parks and the Regional Rail Authority to express what their requirements are, you know, from this end, so. So, you know, there's been some, actually, you know, in talking to Chad, you know, there's been some actually positive comments because of this, so. So we're hoping by having this kinda open forum meeting for a couple hours on Thursday, you know, we can maybe make life easier for everybody.
And, and I know Jody has sent out notices on the road right of ways as well, because we, we, we've got some people that are extending themselves a little bit too much, especially when you get high corn, that it's tough to see on the intersection.
You know, and if, if I can, a little discussion on that. So I did have, you know, some people call on that as well, because, you know, the letters have gone out, and, uh, you know, some of the farmers, especially, cause they are farming to the bottoms of the back slopes, and when they go certified their acreage with F S A, you know, they, they don't necessarily go by what the actual property line is, they go by the mapping of, so if, if they see they're down there and it gains them an extra acre, sort of crop reporting acres, everything comes with that extra acre. So then it's like, well, you know, how are we gonna do that? And I said, well, you know, technically, it was public right-of-way to begin with, so, you know, even reporting acres, you know, it should've been backed up a little, but I think, you know, F S A goes off of the mapping system, I think, so, you know, cause they have to be to the point, multiple decimal points of acreage to certify those acres, so. So it's gonna be a process.
I've had a couple of phone calls, and there's been a little bit of finger pointing, well, how come you're enforcing me and you're not enforcing my neighbor? And, yeah, it, we're stuck in the middle.
I mean, it is a safe, it's, it's getting to be a safety concern. I mean, that, you know, you, you don't begrudge them because it's kind of, well, it keeps the weeds out and everything else, but, uh, in the same breath, I mean, it was put there for a reason back in the day, so, you know.
What it, what, I, I'm not gonna suggest the process, but, uh, if that becomes an issue, our action has typically been a notification. I mean, you're gonna run into that more in your, very much more in your district, uh, obviously, than Terrell or I, so, uh, is, was that, would that be something you could live with?
As far as what?
Oh, if we've got, you know, an incursion into the right-of-way, uh, should we notify the, uh, party that's involved in that?
And that's kinda what's going on right now. They're, they're doing certain, you know, I mean, some of the county roads are ready. Every resident along there has gotten letters, you know, to the fact that they wanna reestablish the right-of-ways.
All right.
The, the other thing you're starting to notice is, uh, especially where you have erodible land, and when you start farming that bottom, like now, if you get a year like this with all this snow, what does it start doing? Their topsoil, everything starts, you know, just getting hauled downstream. So I, you know, I think some of them do realize that it also served another purpose. It was like a natural waterway to prevent some of this erosion, so. But, you know, it's work in process, and I think Jody and her crew will try and accommodate as much as she can, and, you know, I think, uh, I don't think it's been a heavy-fisted, you know, I mean, I think we've tried to work with as many as we could, so.
All right. Anything else? If not, I'll pound the gavel one more time. We are adjourned.